All right. Start the meeting. PPW commissioners for August 11th. We have the minutes from the July 14th meeting. And if everyone is good with, I'll take a motion to accept.
I'm good.
We make a motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Dave?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So, 3-0. New business, water and sewer abatements and additional commitments. Of the agenda here, so we got 305 Park Ave. So these are abatements, 305 Park Ave. Water for 7250, sewer for 45, should not have been billed. 54 South Ave. $45 for sewer, should not have been billed. And then 68 Harvard, water for 10781, sewer for 6692. It was overestimated. And then we have one commitment. For same, 68 Harvard Street. For 7250 for water and 45 for sewer. Did not generate a bill. So those two different periods, Amy, is that why we have one commitment and one abatement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Amy, your voice has got deep.
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute myself. Yes, they were two different periods.
Two different periods, okay. So it's almost a wash, but. Okay. So someone wants to make a motion? To accept the one, two, three abatements and one commitment.
I'm just going to accept the abatements and commitments as read.
I'll second it.
All in favor, Wayne?
Aye.
Dave? And I'm yes. So that's 3-0. Step increase for Ryan Harrington. So you, Bruce? Bruce?
He's muted.
I don't know if that's Bruce or Dennis, he muted.
Bruce is muted. It's a contractual, it's after his anniversary, it's time.
Governor, what about his performance? Isn't that kind of part of it?
I think my, I, I think he does excellent. He tries hard. Pretty much on a constant basis. He's, you know, he's, in my opinion, you know, he's Bruce's guy, but in my opinion, he's working out well.
Okay, looks like we just lost Bruce. So is he?
I make a motion that we give a step increase to Ryan Harrington's anniversary date.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, Wayne?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And I'm yes. 916 Temple Street, I saw the email, Amy, that they rescinded their request to meet with the board, so.
They did, yes.
I think we just noted that in the minutes. But they will pay their bill.
And there's a new meter at that residence now, right? Dennis?
Yeah, it was a new meter that discovered the problem.
Yep.
Kind of on that, Bruce, just, I know we're not reading meters more than the billings allow, but I don't even know what percentage we have installed. Obviously COVID messed it all up. But we'll wait till we get to it. We have it on the agenda. We talk about meters. I have a couple of questions, so we'll wait till we get to it. Bruce, you back?
Now it says he's connecting to audio.
Little dots.
Heavy dots.
Still connected. 571 Temple.
Yeah, I sent him the link to, to join. I didn't hear any more back from him. Dennis, did you hear from Victor?
I have not. I'm assuming it would have been by an email, and I have not had one. I just checked.
He didn't send me an email either, so he had the Zoom information.
Okay. I think we want to table it, I guess technically. I mean, I don't think there's anything for the board to act on. We acted on it last meeting.
Was that the letter that Dennis sent with the backup? I think, let me, I saw it here. So it actually tested slow, if I recall.
Yeah. Seventy percent at low flow.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think we just noted that. Tabled.
I believe he still wants to appeal.
And we tested the, we tested the meter?
Um, yes, we did.
Yes, and it's slow.
Um, it's very slow at low flow, and it's not so slow at intermediate and high flow, but it's overall, it's slow. Or, you know, it's under, it's underwritten. Either it's either within range of being accurate or underwritten, depending on the amount of flow.
So the water went through the meter?
Yes.
So what's the appeal?
Excuse me?
What's the appeal?
I'm not sure.
Same as everybody else, they don't want to pay the bill, I guess.
Unless, you know, unless they're, unless they're questioning the method of testing.
I think we, you know, unfortunately, this is all we can do as far as, you know, meeting, so.
All right.
I think we just show it as a you know, we made, we made the meeting available, and they did not attend. I think we as far as the board go, we consider it closed.
Correct. I'm just checking back in here, can you hear me now, guys?
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, cross connections. Assuming this is yours, Dennis?
Um, yeah, I think I might have gone over this before with you guys, is that we're going to need to, the two lines for cross connections, the revenue side and the expense side, they're going to need to be adjusted up. We've added like 159 accounts now, and we're going to need to adjust that to reflect it. Right now, I might have to propose this, if we can't find another avenue of paying the bill, might be able to do it through leak detection, but might have to propose an article at the next special to pay for the additional testing that's already gone on.
Well, can't we increase the testing fee?
We did. You guys voted for that, and, and but the, we did increase the testing fee, but it, that, that did not come into effect until the June billing. The billing that, that, that we need to pay, pay, you know, basically, the fall billing ate up all the money between the between the survey and then the, the additional tests they did, the added accounts that they did. It pretty much ate, ate the entire year's funds for testing. So when we, so when we got the spring bill, and it was late because of, you know, the survey, it, you know, it was short. And I was, the other thing is that I was, I was under the impression this was a revolving account, but I've since then been learned that it is not.
Well, maybe that's something that we need to put in a town meeting to make it a revolving account.
Yeah, it should be. Sorry.
Generally, they, you know, from, from what I understand, and I'm not sure, you know, how it was done in the past, but it all comes back to water and sewer anyways.
Right. I mean, it wasn't
Excuse me?
It wasn't done in the past.
No, well, there weren't as many accounts.
Right.
We're, we've almost, we've almost, we're almost going to double the, the amount of testing that was done before.
So Dennis, this is a line item on the budget?
There are two lines. One of them is the revenue side, where we take in the money, and the other is where we pay it out to Water Safety Services. So both of them, you know, and this, and, and I know, you know, that we know the survey they did, and they actually ran over on the survey. The survey was allowed to have $5,000. Survey ended up being 40, 5445 by the time they stopped. And I know there are still accounts to be had that need to be, you know, added. And I don't know if we, you know, we can do that ourselves, while I have to do it through a survey. We already know them, you know, I already know like
It should be a revolving account just for that.
You know, I guess you could say that it kind of is. I mean, it just doesn't go back to the, that line, but it stays in water.
It doesn't go back to that line.
It stays, it stays in water sewer enterprise.
Right, but a revolving account for that the police department, it goes into that account, and then you draw from that account. And that's what needs to happen.
Yeah, we don't
That's all I was getting at. You know, not a criticism, we just need to do that, make it easier for you to do your job. I mean, it's a requirement of the state, the federal, you know, of backflow and
Yeah, cross that, DNP required. The, the the revenue side of it, it will cover the, the expense. It's just, it's got, we got to get it caught up.
Right, with the increase. Right?
Yep. Oh, the increase will more uncover.
Yeah.
Um, even under the old, old way, but it's just the fact that we, you know, I did not think about the additional accounts that would be tested after the survey.
Right.
I hear. I'm just curious, I'm sorry, refresh me, do you know what we're charging per connection?
It used, it was previously we charged, the town charged $35, and Water Safety Services charged us $30, and that's changed from to $35 that Water Safety Services charges, and $55 that we charge for the, for the billing, you know, that we charge. So it used to be 30 and 35, now it's 35 and 55.
Yeah, which is more than fair, I think, compared to surrounding cities and towns.
Oh, yeah.
We did, we did, we did do it, and we're still severely under what most towns have charged.
Yeah.
We did do a comparison with several other, other towns, you know, and cities even, and, and, and we're way behind most still. But, you know, little at a time, I guess.
I appreciate the refresher, thank you.
Well, that's more or less kind of a heads up for you guys, is that that's something that's going to get changed.
Well, we got change, but does it make more sense to change, like we said, to a revolving account? We got to make some make it, let's make it work better for the future. I don't, I don't know.
Right. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the disadvantages to having an evolving count, close to what, you know, what we do now. I mean, it's not, they can't, we can't take, it can't go anywhere else. It has to stay in water and sewer.
No, it's then.
If you have a revolving account, you don't have to worry about that at town meeting anymore. It's just, you just take care of it every year, and it comes out of the revolving account. You don't have to put it in as a line item. You don't have to worry about running out of money.
Um, that's right, I understand that, but once, with, you know, when, if, once you collected all, all the bills, you would have an excess amount of money that would have, that would have to be moved back into water and sewer retaining.
Why doesn't it have to be moved at all?
Well, then we would just eventually get to the point where it was, you know, two, three, four times larger than the expense.
Yeah, and then but it doesn't have to be
And it would be, and it would be stuck in that line.
Yeah, well, we're not going to use it for anything else, so it doesn't, doesn't matter.
Well, that's why we want it out, so we can use it for other things in water and sewer.
Be a better way, we may talk to the finance committee and similar, and then someday, like you're saying, you're afraid in 10 years, we have a way of moving that.
Right, if, if, after a long period of time, you would have a large amount of money stuck in that, that revenue line.
And then you just transfer it at a, at a town meeting back into the water and sewer retainers.
Right.
Or use it for something else, you know, we use it.
Yeah.
You, you know what I mean? We go to town meeting and say, hey, we're going to transfer money from the, from this revolving account, like police and fire use, you know, and use it to
Well, pretty much the way it happened, yeah, if, so the way, if we were, if we had not have got behind on this particular, you know, if I had not have got behind this particular year, we would have had excess money in the revenue line, and it, as it is, and at the end of the year, that would have been put back into retained earnings to be used also.
I like that you're keeping in the revolving account, and if it just builds up, then we use them, so. You know, maybe, maybe there's a special project, or a piece of equipment, or who knows what.
The wording on the revolving account has to say just that.
Right.
Not it to be used, like the fire department and the police department do the same thing. Use it for bulletproof vests, they use it for tases, you know, it can be used for all other needs for the water and sewer department.
Right.
Right, I guess maybe, if you can look into it, Dennis, I mean, we have to make adjustments.
All right, more to come on that.
Should there be a we assuming there's going to be some type of fall town meeting? We just finished the spring.
Well, the cat has to be, doesn't there, for the force man?
Aye.
True.
I haven't, I have not heard one yet.
Good.
I haven't any plans for one yet.
Well, we, we may need a special for the force man.
Yep, we may.
Because I, it's, we're playing Russian roulette with that pipe. I don't think we should be waiting another eight, 10 months.
So I would, I would say that as soon as we get a number, or an idea of what a number is going to be from
Right.
environmental partners, that, yeah, we need to move ahead.
Okay.
I forwarded all you, everybody, the email from Env, ZIAD, the environmental partners, how the progress that he's making.
Yeah, he's moving right along.
Yeah, I don't know if he wants to cover that now, or do you want to finish the other meeting?
We get down, let's finish the, finish the new business.
Yeah, we're almost done, right?
Yeah. Water sewer after hour fees, and you, Dennis?
So again, so when we, when we have an after hour shut off for a resident, resident calls up, they're doing some plumbing at home on a Sunday or whatever, we send a guy out to do a shut off, and it's, it's during, after hours, it's 70 60 on and 60 off, $120, which I think is about as much as we want to hit a resident with. We do have sometimes requests for companies such as a sprinkler company, to do an after hours shut off, so they can change out a valve or something like that, and, and it's still the same cost for them, and we do not, you know, by the time you, if you send two guys to do that, you know, working with a, say, a sprinkler company, or a water company, or, you know, plumbing company that's doing work for a commercial business, we don't recover the money, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys attention, that maybe we, you know, we ought to think of something different for commercial.
Absolutely, I mean, we should be we're not covering our costs. The guys are getting, you know, they're getting what they're getting. It's not, certainly not even close to covering our costs.
Yeah.
And the town
Like I said, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, you know, sometime, if you could think about it, you know, and maybe we could come up with a different fee for commercial.
Absolutely.
Got any numbers?
Well, I'd like I'd like to, I'd like to at least cover our costs.
Absolutely.
You know, the other thing is if, in, in cases where we had to, you know, we're in, like, in the middle of Route 18 or something, I'd also want to be that, you know, they're going to be responsible for the details, and we're, but we're going to be, we're going to have the say so whether we want one or not.
Right. And if you're in the middle of Route 18, we want one.
Yeah, exactly, well, the guys want one.
I mean, we can, we can leave it on the agenda and come up with a, think about it, and come up with a number for the next meeting, if that what you guys want to do.
Well, I was kind of hoping to get a chance to maybe ask some other towns.
Okay, no, I mean, good idea, yeah. We'll leave it on the agenda, we'll, we'll put it, and we'll come up, get some additional info, and we'll come up with a new fee next meeting.
Okay.
Old Business. PA Landers. Moving right along, looks like.
Who's got the baby?
Looks good.
Yeah, sorry, it's a meltdown going on.
How do you use them?
Well, they're, they're done, they're done with the, the water part, I told you guys last time. They had a couple, they had a little problem with Jiffy Lube today, as far as their entrance was blocked. There was some confusion over who would provide the signage for where Jiffy people would get into Jiffy Lube. Talked to Chris here, and he took, you know, as far as I know, he took care of it. But now it's, it's mostly just, it's all sidewalk and telephone poles and patching.
Yeah, they were doing sidewalks today.
Yeah.
Agree.
Have you gotten any ASBILTS, any more ASBILTS from them, Dennis?
I, no, not even, I have not, and I'm, I've come, you know, I would have liked to seen some more by now. I should, actually, I should have probably asked them by now, again.
Yeah, it's just that, I kind of need that to figure out the final bills and payments and, you know, all that, that they were kind of you know, their base was all over the place.
Right, the, the other thing was they, are we going to get, you know, get together with them and have some kind of Zoom call? I think that's where we left, I think that's pretty much where we left it with them.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a couple of things I had questions on, I mean, the, the big one, the mega lugs is between the town and the state more than, you know, us payment to Landers, so. But yeah, there's a few things, but I was just hoping that we could wrap it all up, I mean, I don't think it's a long discussion that we have to have, if we have all the ASBILTS and we can verify, you know, all the services are there, you guys can verify, they're all put in, you know, all the curb stops are there, they haven't been buried, or, you know, under the concrete by accident, or in all those type things.
We, we do, we do that, we still, Landers calls us every so often and asks for an audit before they pour.
Okay.
And, and we do that, and we go up and see, check things as needed, you know.
Okay.
They're moving right along. The, the overhead light guys, the Bell.
Yeah.
Stalin.
Yeah.
About stringing them.
Yeah. Oh, they're moving right along.
That's good.
I would, I would say it's a world of difference between what's happening in Whitman and what's happening further north.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll show you a bill I just got from AutoTech for $4,500 for my daughter's car from what happens further to the north.
Further north.
Yep. Well, Landers got to move down the street, they get to stretch from East Bridgewater all the way down to 106.
I heard that, yes.
Yeah, so that's the next stretch. I don't think it's, I don't think it's widening, I think it's just improvements.
Oh, they're not widening?
I, I think the intersections are getting done, you know, 106 in that where's it, Central Street and all that, in East Bridgewater, right in the center. I think they're reconfiguring all the intersections, but the road's just getting we're going to get, probably get new sidewalks and, you know, just improvements, but that's where they're going next. So. Right, Dennis, I guess if you, if you could reach out to Chris, see if we can get those ASBILTS, and I think it doesn't make sense to only meet on part of it. You know, there's a handful of things, and about, we get the ASBILTS, we can kind of finalize everything. You know, they're not going anywhere around for a while, so. And there'll still be other payments, so I think we're, we're good.
Okay, I can do that.
Chapter 90, Bruce, how we doing?
How we doing? Good, the guys, you know, Edwards is on hold until we get the curbing done, and we're down to the last, we could have the curbing done Friday, or Monday or Tuesday. I'm a little concerned about putting the curbing down without pouring cement that day, because possible thunderstorms Thursday, but yeah, it's, it's moving on good. I think you guys have done a great job. It's been, you know, it's been tough with the heat waves to be doing that kind of work. You know, this was kind of bad luck that we got the heat wave right when we started doing the curbing, and it's been going ever since, but that's going good, we got the okay, I don't know if I spoke, if we had the okay when at our last meeting when we spoke, but since town meeting, we got the okay for Homewood Drive, Phase 2 of Winter Street. So, you know, that, that's pretty much the extent of chapter 90. Looks good.
The guys are actually doing an incredible job on Winter Street. They should be commended for the work that they're doing. There's no other community our size that's laying curbing like that anywhere. Just not happening.
Agreed.
So
Agreed.
We should be all pro, pretty proud of those guys for the work that they've done. That saved the town a ton of money.
Ton of money, I I agree. We're setting it for, for basically free, you know, the guys are here, we're paying them, you know what I mean, we're not paying anymore, and we're getting in curbs probably 12, 15 bucks a foot these days for just install. So.
Right, and they're certainly not making union pay like they do in the state. So, they should be commended.
I agree. It's, it's, it's been tough going, they, no complaints, they, they chug right along. Like I said, if, if it's not done Friday, it'll be done Monday or Tuesday, weather permitting, for pouring cement. And then, you know, it'll just regrade the back of the sidewalk, and then it's, TLA would schedule as far as sidewalk and finish for us on the pavement. And we're gonna, like I said, we'll be doing Homewood Drive and Hoag this fall also, and we're going to coordinate with the contractor down there to have that all paved at once, I think I spoke on that last meeting also, so that hasn't changed, well, we're good to go. Since town meeting, we also, you know, we got okayed to buy some trucks, so we're moving on that quickly. Dennis and I have already met. Dennis and I have already met and ordered the two utility trucks, the thirty five hundreds. Chevy with utility bodies and I finalized the purchase today for a chick cabin chassis. Went with the Peterbilt. Little change of pace, you know, over the years, we always had the internationals. You know, I priced them all out. They actually came in a little cheaper with initially and then we added a couple extra things. And they're still right there. You know, all the trucks have Cummins engines. They all have Allison transmissions and generally Eaton. Rear axle, so it comes down to. You know, the cab and the creature features of the cab, et cetera, and Peterbilt's a nice truck, so. I thought it wouldn't hurt to maybe, you know, go in a little different direction and. See how it works out with this truck. So that's that's eight weeks out for delivery of that. They will come to the shop for one day just to for us to check it out. And then it'll go directly to Kerry Trucking for it to be outfitted with the stainless steel sander. Body and plow setup, et cetera.
Sounds good.
Okay, water meters. So obviously, we're still kind of. We picked the wrong time to replace water meters. What's up? What's the percentage roughly? How many were we able to get done before COVID and pandemics that we?
Oh, geez.
Ten fifteen percent or somewhere in that range?
Oh, I think I think around twenty twenty-five percent. It went to crap after that, though, and and so we we're still poking away at trying to get them in there. But and we especially pay attention to the, because we've had the time to look. The the accounts that have are multiple estimates. And a lot of times, you know, we, you know, we make appointments, we go there and then we find out that the we don't feel comfortable. Working on their plumbing. You know, so we it gets cut off. We've had, and you know, I would say that, you know, we've tried to make several appointments in the last couple of weeks. And and several of them where that ended up being like that. And like that, and two of them were on a Friday afternoon at two o'clock and was just like, no, we're not going to mess with that right now.
The ones that we have done, and this kind of goes back to my question in the email, what I was trying to say earlier. Do we do any type of monitoring? Again, I know we're not reading for billing, but does it make sense just to drive through those? I think we kind of did certain areas, you know, and and collect some data and maybe try to fend off. I mean, again, one of the benefits is we can get the information quick and download it and get some reporting to try to help some people that. We don't end up, you know, they don't end up with these thousands of dollars in bills or.
When we, when, you know, when they do a final reading for a house house passing. A lot of times, you know, we go out to radio read a newer house for a house passing and we'll catch. Other, you know, you know, they the reader just reads other everything that's in range. And others, so we get a lot of lot like that, but to specifically go and do the entire town. We usually don't do that unless it's been a while since we've had a passing, you know, and we try and get everything. But we do catch, I mean, the the one on Temple Street was caught like that, the 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 guy that. With the big bill at nine sixteen, we were out doing a reading for a passing. And and we caught that and while we were, you know, while we had the the data, we we downloaded it. And found found the the leak report and he was in there and he was he stuck right out. And we called him and told him about it. He had an opportunity to repair the. Leak, but it was slow in doing so.
No, I guess I guess just, you know, I think it might be something, who knows when? We're going to be able to gear back up and and really start putting these back in. And if we have the software. And then we can, you know, maybe avoid some of these bills or, you know, help a resident out that maybe don't know they have a leak. And then. You know, we did do certain, we did like areas, right? We didn't just randomly go around. I mean, then we try to do. You know, I know we did like a lot up in Auburnville and things like that. I'm just trying to, you know, let's use, you know, we got the tools. I know we don't have them in the full town, but it still might be helpful to use what we have.
The readings that we catch. While doing, you know, looking at something else. You know, we get them basically as bonus afterwards, doing a final or something like that. Sometimes those don't aren't covering the whole town, but they do cover a great majority of it. It's not that large a town.
Right. Just a thought, you know what I mean? Anything to. You know, help someone that may have a leak that doesn't know it and also help us as a board that is, you know, the quarter and they get their huge bill and. You know, I think that one in Temple Street, we had information. You guys had notified them. We had alerts. You know, probably doesn't change how we were going to act on it, but it just gives us more ammunition, more more knowledge of what was going on.
And more warning. You know, I wanted to ask, too sorry, related but different topic is, do we have a limitation, a time limit? I mean, on. We were getting service from the company that provided the meters, you know, the setup. And if it was, you know, would they extend us the courtesy, you know, given COVID restrictions and all that? When we are to do that startup you're talking about, you know?
Um, yeah, I I mean, they still have the contract to fulfill. I'm, you know, I'm not, I, you know, that's a great question, though. You know, can I can certainly can get 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 in touch with them and ask them how the COVID is affecting things. But we, I mean, they want a solid, they still want a solid meters.
Yeah, well, there is a time limit on the contract as far as the price.
That's, I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
Right. And that's that's something that we need to. Need to be cognizant of.
You think it's worth a letter? Guys, like, just like a simple phone call, email?
I give him a phone. I can give him a phone call. He's usually a pretty good guy to get ahold of and. He would find that out.
We have the agreement too. I mean, we signed the contract. And I I know it had some dates in it because, you know, we made sure we had, you know, you can deliver a certain amount by this date. Because we wanted to get them in, so. I think now that I think Wayne and Dave both very good points, we gotta, and then if we have to, we gotta buy them all and put them on the shelves. And we gotta buy them and put them on the shelves to reserve the that we locked in and, you know. I mean, I think the software and all that, you know, that had many more years of support and service and, you know, things like that. I want to say like five years.
All right, we pay for that annually.
Okay, that wasn't I don't agree. I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember.
But there is also a problem with that, where if you buy those meters and put them on the shelf. Soon as we purchase those meters in the contract, the battery, the life, the warranty on the batteries.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, no, I think I think it's a good point. I think we got to look into it. I mean. Everyone's dealing with it, I'm sure. You know, whoever, it's not just water meters, but any anybody that had purchase orders and contracts and. Things like that. But. You know, I I think our, you know, by now, we I think envision that we probably would have been purchased all of them. We're pretty close to purchasing all of them.
I mean, we, I mean, twenty twenty or twenty-five percent. We haven't done a lot lately, so that's that's pretty good. We would have been a half.
I definitely think so.
Dennis, you can look into it. We'll we'll follow up next, you know, see what. To the vendor says, see what our contract does and keep it on the radar.
Okay.
Complete Streets, Bruce, any update? We're going to be able to squeeze it here or we thinking next year?
I still think that we should be able to do the start reconfiguring the island. There was some crews out here this week, last week, doing some more surveying and taking some measurements and stuff. So we are, we're not at the point where we're ready to put it out to bid, but I still think, you know, we could start and finish the island. Part of the project and hold off on the, you know, I think you're right when you say we should hold off on the sidewalk part of it. Until the spring, you know, unless unless it, I don't think we're going to get started quick enough to start ripping up the sidewalk now. And get it concrete poured and everything, you know. If it moves quicker as far as the big going out, then yeah, it's not a huge job for a company to do that does that kind of stuff regularly. But I'm thinking more so the spring for sidewalk portion of that.
And Force Main, so sounds like Ziad's making some progress based on his emails. You know, and then my only question. The S R F funding and stuff like that, is there any action that we need to do, Dennis, or as a board or with?
Right, so according to Ziad, he has, we have till the twenty first, twenty first of this month. To submit an application for an S R F loan. And you're based, but you know, if he's going to do it, we got to tell him. I basically told him that I will have an answer for him tomorrow. So if, you know, if the guy's wanting to pursue it, then, you know, I like need to let him know. Of course, it's going to involve some effort in his part to get, you know, to do it. He tells me that you're looking at like one, one and a half, maybe two percent loan rates right now.
That's good.
They're really low. I just refinanced.
And we're thinking about doing the same.
I'm just giving it to you for nothing. You're talking one and two percent.
I I I think that, yeah, that needs to be done and.
Get a minimum, yeah, get get the application in. I mean. Borrowing money from somebody, you know.
Right, I can't imagine, you know, I don't, you know, without talking to Mary Bath or Frank or somebody, I can't imagine what else we could go for at that kind of money. At that kind of rate.
Now's the time. Because after November, you don't know what what the rates are going to be.
So I'd say, yeah, I'd say Absyad, perhaps, you know, so he would he would fill all that out for us, Dennis?
Yeah, he would. He would make the application. Yes, it's I guess it's somewhat involved. But I'll let him know. On somewhat a related. Theme here is that I emailed you guys, the tour agreement with the city of Brockton is is done.
Oh, hang on, Dennis, a second. Sorry, one more question on the Force Main. If I read that right, what Ziad was saying was he started all this work. Because we agreed on the final language of the contract, but I don't think he actually has it. And I just want to clarify that and we might need to add that to our.
As we get the contract.
So I guess I'm asking, can you confirm if he actually received one, like some signatures from?
There was some question whether, you know, they needed an entire. Copy of the contract with the signature page attached. And and I questioned, I see, you know, so you're going to email me a copy of a contract that I'm going to then. Print the entire contract, get you guys to sign the signature page, and then I'm going to scan and email the entire thing back. It's like, you know, it's all it's all electronic, I guess, is if I just, if I get the signature page signed. Is that good enough? And he checked on it. He said it was.
Yeah, so Dave, are you talking about kind of his first line there?
Yes.
As you know, I have started to advance this work as soon as we got the contractual language squared away. So that we lose track of the schedule. Is he saying that he's kind of telling us that? As soon as the language is squared away, he 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 started, even though the contract got signed. Two, three, four weeks later. I'm reading it a little differently. I think he said that he started ahead of getting the actual signed contract because he knew how important it was. And he's made some good progress. I I guess it's worth confirming with Ziad, but.
No, that he more or less told me that too.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I appreciate either way.
In anticipation that we'd eventually get it worked on, he did do a lot of work upfront.
Yes, so it's a point being he's going to want a bill, which I think is fair, and I want to know that we're able to pay him at the appropriate time too. That's all. I just I didn't know if we had to do anything to follow up with counsel or whatever.
Yeah, I think just a confirmation with Ziad that he has. All the documents in place and. When he starts billing, we can pay him.
I'm just kind of agreeing with Wayne on the Russian roulette analogy. It's every day that goes by.
No, I know.
We don't get cracking on it. We're we're going to have a nightmare down there that we're not going to be able to handle.
Appreciate he's doing what he can. All right, that's all. Thank you. Didn't mean to slow it down, but.
So Dennis, you're saying the the agreement, I think you sent out?
I did send the final version. This has been gone over by, you know, as you know, it started in two thousand sixteen. The the and that that's just, I believe we've gone over and, you know, dotted, crossed every T and dotted every I that there is.
The total is one million eighty one thousand eighty eight ninety four, right? That's, that would be up to, that would be up to date.
Did you say ninety four or eighty four?
I said. One million eighty one thousand.
Eighty eight.
Oh, eighty eight ninety four.
Ninety four, that's correct.
And that will that will bring us up to date with water and sewer with the town of Brockton.
Right, that'll bring us up to this fiscal year. Well, last fiscal year.
When when will we have those documents?
I I emailed you. It was in the email. It was attached to the email.
Yeah, but we need to sign them.
Oh, it's here at the desk.
Oh, okay.
Just just the signature page.
Right.
Yep.
Basically, it's signed by you, signed by the Board of Slackmen, signed by the accountant.
And everybody's happy. I mean, I haven't had a chance to read all this, but I'm assuming they they squared away, you know, future billings and the auditing of that and. You know.
Yeah, they proposed a different kind of exhibit and we we reserved the right to audit that exhibit.
Yeah, I was glad to see the lawyers agreed as best. Yeah, I was glad to see the lawyers, uh, agreed as best they.
Okay. That's good. Um, I got a couple little things, the gas line work on eighteen. Um, I did get some correspondence back, and I, I sent it Bruce to yourself and Dennis. To be honest, I didn't even look at it. So I'm not even sure it was in there. Um.
The, um, the, the stuff from the state?
Yeah. Trying to find it. I think I sent it.
I didn't see it.
Are you telling me I didn't send it?
I, I, it was, was it from you?
Um, I got it, and I think, I thought you guys were copied as well, but then I also thought I sent it to you, but.
It was from Chris.
Um, it was from Chris's boss. Um.
Okay.
Cause it was directly from the district, it was from District Five. Damn it.
So if I, if I remember correctly, um, the questions still are, we still are questioning, um, how the gas company is going to pay with us? And it sounds like they're, 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 um, uh, best I can tell is they're committed to at least a, um, half lane pavement for the part, section that, um, um, that we weren't involved in. So in other words, from, uh, Joyce, Joyce Avenue to, um, Glen Street? And then that depends on how many lateral trenches they do? Whether that devolves into a full pavement?
Okay.
And then. No, that has, um, Joyce Terrace to Glen Street has, doesn't have anything to do with us. Um, we still want an, we still want an answer for them whether they're going to, uh, pay for some of the pavement um, between Glen Street and, and Temple and, um, um, the, you know, Auburn Street, Bedford Street intersection.
Yep. So, uh, Bruce and Dennis.
That's what.
You, you were both, I think I forwarded to you, but also there was an email July twenty-eighth from Mike McGrath at District Five.
Mm-hmm.
In response to the letter that we sent. So it shows the permit and gives the information. And it says National Grid was gonna supply a schedule and yada, 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 and once they get all that, they'll meet with us, but obviously that didn't happen.
Well, I think they were waiting for us to schedule. They wanted us to respond and schedule a Zoom meeting. Was the impression I was under.
Once Mast dot receives a schedule update, we will provide the town with a copy and establish a video conference meeting to discuss further and answer questions. So they, they were gonna schedule the meeting with us.
Right, and they have not.
Info from National Grid. Are they still working out there? I know they were kind of, they were there and then it seemed like they were gone, or?
The gas company?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were there today.
They were there. Okay, let me, I'm gonna flag this email. I'll respond to him tomorrow. Um. And kind of be like, you know, hey, what's going on?
Yeah, I was gonna say they're close by, even if they weren't here today. Working in East Bridgewater, as you mentioned, I noticed them doing gas down by one oh six right before.
It really shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, it shouldn't.
No, it's talking a lot of asphalt. You know?
I'm sure this is time, they, uh, they also have some trenches to fix around town, too, which I know Bruce called on, so I appreciate that. It, and I know they're gonna do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I see the one up on Commerce Street, uh, they marked it, but they haven't fixed it.
Right, right. That was progress, so.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them again tomorrow. They usually a little quicker than that, a lot quicker than that. I have a small list farm, too.
I wasn't sure if they called for a dig safe and, uh, we're waiting for the water department. Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay.
If Dennis was still on.
Wayne and Dave, I just forwarded to you, I apologize. But there's not too much there, there's the permits and copy of our letter and their letter. I'll follow up with Mike McGrath and just to keep it alive. And then the last thing I have is thanks to town meeting, we got some money for a design of a new building. So I don't, I don't. I wanna, I guess, you know, just put it on there, I don't know what, uh, the next steps are, what can we do, what can't we do? Um, you know, I don't think it's enough to hire an engineering firm, but is enough to hire a company that makes prefab buildings and then turn that into a construction bid document and say, we wanna build this building or this. It's tough because we can't do a sole source, we can do this type of building, you know?
Hey, yeah, I think Dennis and I have been talking about, you know, potential sizes, I think we need to get together with a steel building company that does a pre-engineered type building and see what's out there for pre-engineered buildings that fit the size that we're looking for or something similar, and then move from there to get somebody to design what's inside that building.
What, uh, what was the one in Brockton, Bruce?
What was the size of it? Um, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head, and again, I'm not at my desk, so I don't have it right in front of me. Um, it's, it's, it was probably a little smaller than what we're looking to build, but it was very similar. And, um, I wanna reach out to that guy. I also talked to an environmental partners engineer, and we had a meeting on a different subject, and I mentioned, uh, the stormwater infrastructure in our yard. And he, and I mentioned that we're looking at doing your building, that would include that, uh, some of that work in the yard, and, um, he said, well, I designed, you know, I designed those buildings also, so if you need help with that, we can talk about that at the next meeting, so that was a good, um, you know, good contact.
I, I, I guess the question is, what can we get? You know, I wanna be careful. You know, it's still a public project, so we, we, we can do all the research you want, and we can say, hey, you know, we talked to this guy and that guy, but we can't sole source a building. We can't say we want, uh, XYZ building. Um, so I, I, I guess I'm curi- you know, I'm, I haven't really thought about it or really even crunched any numbers. You know, what can we do with this money? You know, i- is it, can environmental partners take what we already have for soil, geotechnical information together with what they, you know, a standard prefab type steel structure? And maybe some, like Bruce was saying, you know, the basic stormwater improvements? And say, hey, I can give you a design for that. Um, I, I, that's where I'm, you know, I wanna use the money, but I obviously wanna use it in the right way, too, and get some momentum or some movement, really. We don't even have any momentum because we have no movement.
Right. We, we, I will, we, I will get together with Bob Carman and Frank. They've built buildings around town. They, I don't know the procurement laws when it comes to building a multimillion dollar building, but they've been involved in it. So I'll, I'll reach out and we'll, we'll have something for them at least to discuss at our next meeting as far as where, what can we do with it? Who can we talk to? I'll talk to, I do know some people in the, that, in the metal fab business building, um, that can pick their brains a little bit and see what they've done to municipal values or public sector and, and, um, you know, we'll go from there.
Yeah, I mean, the beauties of prefab building is you don't have to pay for any, any engineering upfront.
Who's taking over Frank?
Was that Wayne?
What was that? Over for Frank. Lisa?
I, I, I don't think that's been determined. They put money aside at town meeting to do a, you know, uh, to hire somebody to do a search.
Yeah, they took ten grand, wasn't it? Ten, fifteen grand?
That's it?
Fifteen, I thought, yeah.
Um, because Frank's only gonna be here for another few weeks.
I know.
Is that quick?
Yeah, I thought it was the end of August.
Yeah, I thought it was September sometime, but, um, you know, right now Lisa Green is the procurement officer, so she, she, she should know that. You know, the rules on that, the buildings. Anyway.
Yeah, I think Sid, if, if, you know, we certainly have a relationship with environmental partners that, you know, if you give us some budget numbers on a foundation design and, and some, you know, basic drainage improvements, you know, maybe it's, you know, that gets the front building, that gets the front building built, you know, or at least get the design for the front building.
Right. And af- after my stormwater meeting today, there, there'll have to be minimal of, well, there'll have to be stormwater improvements on, on the site, you know, in the, where the front garage, you know, we have to. Um, we're becoming out on that soon.
Like just basically oil water separators, stuff like that, Bruce, or something more?
Uh, yes, and, you know, everything about where the water goes that is in the yard with truck wash, et cetera. Um, you know, the very, the EPA is very interested in municipal, municipal buildings and, you know, from what I understand from our meeting today, they, they plan on, uh, auditing twenty percent of the towns in the state, uh, in the first year or so of the permit, so, um, which, you know, they really, there wasn't that kind of, uh, you know, enforcement before, but I think now they're gonna be cracking down a little bit.
Are they gonna be requiring holding tanks?
I, that, I'm not sure. I, I, I think that's a possibility, especially in the truck wash area. Um, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely oil water separators and, you know, drain line, you know, roof drains separate from floor drains and.
Well, you can't have floor drains anymore.
They just gotta go an oil water separator.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and put them into the sewer.
But there's other things we gotta clear up on the civil planet, too. I mean, you know, makes sense for us to have, I think, uh, just to get the permit. Need something, so.
Nice that the state's gonna crack down on all the local cities and towns during a pandemic.
How lucky can we be?
I guess I'll leave that as a no comment.
Alright, I guess Bruce, you know, you certainly, you know, you've been involved with it for a while, as long as anybody, so I'll, you kind of dig a little bit and see if we can find some more information, I just we get some money, so let's get some.
I think it's time to, you know, you know, cut to the chase and get moving on it. We got some money available, let's, uh, you know, stop talking and about it finally, since we have a little money, we can get something concrete on paper, so we can present it at the next town meeting to just get it voted, you know?
Yep.
Or not voted, whatever is gonna happen, but we have to, you know, we have to do it.
Yep. I agree.
Um, I have a couple things, if, I don't know, sure what the board, uh, would wish at this point.
Sure, I mean, I get, I'm, I'm all set. What have you got?
So just to, uh, touch on the stormwater issue after our meeting today, again, regarding the whole MS four stormwater, um, requirements that are coming down the pipe, we have to present, um, new bylaws to the town, they're gonna be quite involved, we're gonna have to have joint meetings with the planning board and, uh, town administrator and the builder commissioner and probably the conservation commission, and I think what it comes, end up, will end up coming down to or what potentially we plan on doing, and I say we, working with environmental partners engineers, is trying to keep, keep it as simple as possible but remain, um, within, you know, remain up to date with EPA rules and regs on the stormwater. Uh, we're a small town, we're, we're, we're pretty much built out, especially as far as commercial property. A lot of the construction stormwater stuff is the things that are over an acre of impervious material, things like soft and, used soft and shots, things like that, where, you know, I don't think we have much of that left for the town of Whitman, but there's gonna have to be some changes made to enforcement authorities for all the stormwater things, those requirements, so that will probably fall on me, uh, working with the planning boards, engineers, as far as, uh, inspections of new subdivisions, construction sites, uh, things like that. Uh, these are all things that are gonna have to work out with them, but I'm sure it's gonna have to be a town official, you know, paid town official, not, not, not a, a board member of, you know, and it wouldn't be fair anyway to have that, so. I think those are just things that are coming up in the next weeks and months, uh, that will be slowly presented to the board as far as, um, what we're gonna have to do with stormwater and where we gotta go with that. Um, the only other thing I have is just a matter of, uh, we, um, in case you see it driving by or hear of it, there was a large tree on Rock Street, silver maple, probably one of the bigger trees in town, and a leader off the tree, which is, the leader itself is probably larger than a lot of trees, and that leader, uh, fell onto a porch and a partial dormer of a roof, uh, electrical service, although it didn't pull it down. This was yesterday evening. So the bottom line is National Grid cut and cleared the electrical service, uh, so there's any tension on it. As it sits right now, the leader is still on the person's yard, resting on their front porch. The weight is on the ground now, though, and there's some branches on the porch. It looks like the damage was to the gutters, not any major damage to the house at all. Um, the, the reason I think of this is because it's a town tree, but the leader fell onto private property, so there you get into the, when a tree falls from one person's property to another person's property, who does the cleanup? So, uh, where we're at right now is the homeowners, wanna have a tree company paid for by their homeowners insurance, remove the tree from the house and put it on the ground, and then, it's not the whole tree, the rest of the tree is still standing. Once it's on the ground, DPW crews are gonna, to help them save money, ship it and clear it, and then I will have to hire a tree company to remove the rest of the tree, because now the tree is a hazard because it's out of balance, uh, you know, and it's got a wound that where water can get in and everything else, so the tree is gonna come down now. It's gonna be, you know, I, I'm guessing twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars to have the tree taken down. And National Grid has no interest in taking the tree down farce, which they found a bunch farce, you know, they think it's a threat to their wives, but their words, not interested in this one. So that's on Rock Street, just if you, you might see it when you travel or hear it, it's a very large tree, but.
Is that the one that, uh, Kevin went to the other day?
Uh, no, that was, actually, that was across the street. It, it's just, you know, the, the homeowner, you know, rightfully so, was upset, and she just, it, you know, thought that the tree should have come down years ago, but, uh, the tree was a healthy looking tree. It's just, you know, it, trees are unpredictable sometimes. This tree withstood that windstorm fifty-something mile an hour winds last Tuesday without any branches coming out of it. And then we get a dry, benign, non-wind hot day and a leader, you know, three feet around just falls off, so.
Yeah.
Sometimes you just can't predict these things, even though you could look, you could have looked at that tree yesterday morning and said to yourself, not wrong with that tree, that tree's fine, so. That's what we're seeing. I, I, the, the town hall may be offered to the homeowner to, um, you know, help out with their insurance deductible because, you know, it was a town tree per se, you know?
Yeah, I was gonna say. Sorry, if you were done, Bruce, sorry.
No, I'm not. That, that's pretty much all I had.
I, I was just thinking, we haven't talked about this before. It's worth mentioning, or we, if we don't have a and I know the mass laws are pretty strict on trees that run into things in other towns, um, but you're right, yeah, where, where the town's usually responsible. I know precedents in legal cases have, people won, so. Yeah, I, you're well within your right. I think if something looks questionable, absolutely take it down. That's, I mean, you act as, there's like a tree warden in some towns and, um, I'm guessing that's park and tree, so. Absolutely, you know, and we should probably go around and have like an active program too, looking at, uh, and I know a lot historically people wanna save, but if they're dangerous or like a felony, I think the DPW is supposed to look at that, so.
Yeah, and I get those kind of calls almost on a weekly basis from residents to look at trees they're concerned with. A lot of times it's, uh, you know, the question whether it's on town property or whose property it's on. I go view trees, you know, weekly, uh, and then trees that I know that are odd trees around town, whether it's in the park or street, street side trees, um, that are owned by us, uh, you know, um, constantly, you know, monitoring those. I send letters to residents or, you know, uh, a tree in particular on School Street, I sent several resident, several letters to tell them that they should take the tree down, um, with no action yet, but just to cover us, because it's not a town tree, but it has this tree. So, you know, we're, we're kinda monitoring, um, not kinda doing, I monitor the trees around town.
Okay, I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do.
It's just unpredictable like that. The tree on Rock Street, you know? Just because the tree's big and it seems like, you know, it's scary, doesn't mean that you've gotta cut it down. Because if that was the case, we'd be cutting down every tree that looks like it could possibly do damage to something. If it, if, if it ever came down, those words everybody uses, this bad ever comes down, you know, so.
Well, that's it. They're never a problem until they're a problem, but, you know, I know you got experience in.
Yeah. Is Peter gonna be coming to the next meeting?
Peter.
Our attorney?
Don't know.
Um, I want clarification on qualified immunity. Where it stands and where we stand. And you should all want that too.
Have to go to, uh, executive session today?
And, uh, and find out what that means for the commissioners. As far as that bill that's coming down the pike.
Well, you brought up a term I wasn't familiar with, so, uh, and they're ready.
We, we could send them an email tomorrow and just ask for an opinion via email.
Well, he's gonna, he's gonna be discussing the, uh, the bill for the high school, correct?
I, I would hope so, that we get some type of movement or something. I mean, they got their other issues behind them. They need to act on that.
Don't we all?
So.
Well, we need to get that squared away.
Yep.
Good point.
I think, yeah, let's make the request and we can talk about that and any other legal issues and do an executive session. In person.
Yeah.
We're being recorded, so I'll reserve my comment.
Do we have to go over anything ourselves today, or you just wanna do that all at the same time?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything for us. I mean, it's, it's a legal matter, so we can't really, you know, talk about it in any detail. You guys have anything else? Wayne, Dave, the other?
No.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Dennis, you good?
Nothing. I can't, uh, send you guys an email on during, during the week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. At seven twenty-one. Alright, uh, next meeting, I don't have a calendar in front of me. What's the second Tuesday?
September eighth.
September eighth. That's the day after Labor Day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that, that works for me.
Yep.
Yep, you can do it.
Alright. So we'll do September eighth. Six o'clock. Hopefully in person. Maybe we'll get a meeting in the library. We can meet in the high school library.
Yeah. Uh, that place is. Yeah.
You should be able to meet outside, right?
Yeah.
You do outside?
Alright, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
I can the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Alright. Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Have a good night.